Okay. We're going to call to order the August 27th Planning Commission meeting. Someone call roll.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Cottler.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
And Commissioners Walker, Carey, and Cook are absent.
Thank you very much. On the agenda this evening, we have our concet agenda, council liaison announcements, staff announcements, community comments, and then we will continue our public hearing. Are there any corrections or changes to the agenda? All right, then, we are at the concet agenda. Do I have -- has everybody had a chance to review the commission minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion?
I motion to accept minutes.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I will abstain since I wasn't here. And they are approved. Council Liaison, Mayor Middleton.
But Jean, if you abstained, does that mean we can't approve them because there's only three of us?
We have a majority of the quorum.
Except only three people voting.
Only not if you vote.
Is that the same thing, though?
The majority of the people that are here.
Okay. I don't know how that works.
Me either.
He's nodding his head, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, I'm glad he agreed with me.
It works for me.
Two for two tonight.
I don't have a whole lot. Whoa. They worked tonight. We'll be -- the next council meeting, we're going to be acting on the VLDR amendment that you passed forward to us. That's on the agenda. We had a presentation last week. If you weren't here, you could look on the video regarding the Tuolton Sherwood Road project by Washington County. And I think that's about it. You'll probably be hearing some more on active transportation and things of that nature from Planning. She's going to be forwarding -- there's new metro requirements that they're trying to put in place, so we're working on those. And I think she'll be forwarding you, if you haven't already got, the Southwest Corridor Plan.
All right. Thank you very much. Staff announcements, Brad?
Yes. So, as many of you may or may not have remembered, I've been trying to get you -- so you signed up for some Planning Commission training. There will be still training on September 26, 2013. I believe it's one to five, John. So John and Commissioner Simpson are both signed up to go to that. The city would pay for y'all to go for that. Go to that if you'd like. I kind of need to know this week because I need to get that registration in if anybody else wants to go. Jean's actually going to be sitting on a panel there, so hopefully you've been in contact with Aquila and getting that all set up.
She hasn't contacted me, but I have faith that she will.
I will touch bases with her tomorrow then. Couple of updates. The city of Sherwood versus Ali Ali, the Luba Fuel was dismissed this week. Some of you have seen that, the decision. If you have any questions, please go ahead and feel free to contact us. The council this past week approved putting the Brookman annexation of 97 and 1/2 acres onto the November ballot, so there will be a ballot issue for an annexation out in the Brookman area. Trimed is going to reestablish Line 93 in Sherwood, which will -- we used to have 12 and 94. And so now, Line 93 will run between Sherwood and the Tiger Transit Center weekdays and weekends. And then Line 94 will run between Sherwood and downtown Portland on the weekends. But they will no longer stop at the Tiger Transit Center, so it'll just be a straight shot. It's not an express. The next Planning Commission is September 10th, just a reminder. In that, we plan to bring a work session before you to kind of kick off the Transportation System Plan update with you. And then the last piece of information I have is Chris Kreen from our council has put together a legal brief. Some of you, if you're going to the Bierielsner Hammond seminar that they're going to hold out at the Jenkins Estate, this is what they're going to be talking about. It's the Coons decision that the Supreme Court recently passed down this year. If you're interested, it's a takings issue, and it might be something that you might find of interest. So I have them available, and you can take a look at them.
Thank you very much. Can I let the record show that Commissioner Carey's here? Thank you. Community comments. I have one person who's filled out a form. If anybody else would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight, go ahead and fill out a blue form. Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, field box 534, Sherwood, Oregon. Question come up, since you're going to be delving into the traffic again. Couple of things that keep bugging me is the fact that I think when the Langer was approved, I could be wrong, but it seems like in their traffic study, they said 5% of the traffic going down Tuolton Sherwood Road was truck traffic. But yet, Washington County says it's 10%. And that discrepancy, is that enough? You know, I just have a hard time seeing how it's going to work. Plus, I also noticed in that traffic study that they relied upon a weekday being the worst-case scenario. And I believe, and you've done your TSP before, you found that highest volume of traffic occurs on weekends. And I think that's pretty understandable. You've got people going down to the coast, and that's a major route. And there doesn't seem to be any type of highway designated to allow traffic to get through Sherwood. We seem to be slowing it down, trying to get more traffic through. And we need to, I think, seriously look at a way to help traffic that doesn't want to stop in Sherwood, get around traffic, and then make it easier for everyone. I've noticed in my commute, mornings aren't too bad, but at night, it gets to be a real mess. And I've noticed, you know, traffic coming southbound, backing up from Rory Rogers all the way back to the Edward Jones Building and the medical center there, back to that stoplight and beyond that. And that doesn't seem reasonable to me to have things like that happening. You look at Sherwood Boulevard, there's not that many people who work downtown, but yet that road is backed up. So it appears to be people cutting through downtown Sherwood, just trying to get around six corners. And so, we hope these engineers know what they're doing. But my concern is, is that they're constrained by the money that the county and state's willing to spend on it. And it may be just putting like, pardon me, lipstick on a pig, trying to make it look good. Will it really function? I don't know. Somehow, we don't keep any records of anything of any traffic counts or anything so that we have, you know, a record of seeing. And that was the other thing I noticed in reading the traffic report for Langer. There was two higher levels that they could have pulled for that, but they assumed that it wasn't going to be a superstar. Who knows? So does that mean that that traffic study, they seem to indicate that we may have troubles if that was, in fact, should have been a higher-level store than what they based it on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other community comments? All right, then we will move into full business. And Eugene, I think your comments are very appropriate in the timeliness of where we're going to be with our TSP starting in our next work session, so I hope you bring those back at that time. So, we are moving to public hearing PA 1301 Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan. And this is a continuation of the last meeting. And so, we are not going to read the full legislative disclosure, but I would ask if anyone has any expartee contacts or other disclosure that they need to announce at this time. Okay, I would like to say that I was contacted by Ty Wyman, who is an attorney for the Regency Center. And he approached me with concerns regarding the signalized light that Washington County is proposing to be removed on Tuolton Sherwood Road. And if you haven't heard about that, I think there was -- in addition, I also read all the minutes and watched the video, so I know that that was brought to the commission. But it was a personal contact where he approached me directly and asked me some questions, which I didn't have any answers for. And then I came to the council meeting and watched the presentation that Washington County presented. And they, at the council meeting, verbally said that they were going to, at a minimum, keep a pedestrian light in there. And that's what the traffic gentleman stated. No promises, but that was, you know, on his radar at least. So, that's what my expartee communications were. So, proceeding on this, because it's a continued, it is my understanding that we have left the record open to accept any further testimony that's limited to the adjacent issue. That we're not reopening the entire conversation. All we're taking in is further information. And there was some written testimony submitted by someone whose name I'm not going to find in a timely manner. Oh, yes, I am. Yes, Davis Wright, Trimed. Philip Grillo, that's who. So he submitted written testimony regarding that and some language. So at this point, I think we've, unless the commission has other concerns, would open it up for public testimony if anybody wants to speak to us regarding those specific issue that we left open regarding the adjacent.
Chair Simpson.
Yes.
If I may also, you also at your place had a letter from Washington County, the Director of Land Use and Transportation, Andrew Singalakis, regarding those, the proposed changes. And just as a reminder, the, in the packet and the memo explains this, but for the public as well. Based on the direction from the Planning Commission, the packet includes revisions to the strategies and policies. The red changes are directions from the Planning Commission at the last meeting. The green changes are based on a conversation with myself and Phil Grillo about, you know, sort of addressing that adjacent issue concern. I know that there may be questions about that, but that's so, sort of in general, the discussion should really be focused towards those changes or whether or not you think that there were, that there should be more changes related to the adjacency issue that weren't captured by me in those, in the track changes.
Thank you very much. And one other comment, just for people who have been involved in this process, just because we're only opening it up for the adjacency issues at the Planning Commission level, we are only making a recommendation to the council, and they will have a de novo hearing, which means everything is, will be reopened and all public testimony on any subject. If you want to make changes that we're not discussing tonight, the city council will be taking this matter up in its entirety at their scheduled hearings. So this is not your last opportunity to speak on this. So, yes, and if you want to, so, if you wish to speak, you need to fill out one of the blue testimony forms, submit it to the recording secretary, and --
Somebody with a friend here.
Sorry. It's okay. So, I have, my first one is Phil Grillo. So if you would come, and when you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Chair Simpson, members of the Planning Commission, Mayor Middleton and staff. I'm Phil Grillo here on behalf of Tac Fall Properties, Inc. My business address, 1300 Southwest. Yeah.
Is your microphone working?
Am I closer now? Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay. So I'm here on behalf of Tac Fall Properties. And what I wanted to do, just quickly, is run over the letter that I submitted briefly to you, the August 20th letter and the language that we proposed. And then I also just wanted to briefly address Washington County's letter that was submitted just really a few minutes ago. We just had a chance to see it. In terms of the proposed changes, what we tried to do were three very reasonable, I think, and balanced amendments. The first is to Policy 5, which is simply adding the phrase "and government agencies" to that to make it clear that the city would be encouraging not just property owners, but also government agencies to invest in development that supports the town center vision and recommendations. The two more focused ones are adding Strategy 7.6, which says that the city will support collaborative solutions that enhance vehicular and pedestrian access between and to the town center and adjacent developments such as Sherwood Town Center, and that improves safety for all modes traveling to and within these areas. We think that that is a little bit more focused because it speaks to the Cinema Center, but not exclusive to the Cinema Center. It also includes other adjacent areas. And we think that that's perfectly in line with what your comprehensive plan already requires, but makes it a little bit more clear and, I think, a little bit more balanced, which is what we were trying to do. We certainly could have been a lot more demanding or definitive in proposing language. We chose to try and give you balanced language, to be reasonable about it. The second one is in added Strategy 8.4, that the city will work with the county, ODOT, and local stakeholders to enhance vehicular and pedestrian access from the town center to developments adjacent to the town center, such as the Sherwood Cinema Center and other adjacent facilities. Again, balanced kind of a language, but calling out that it's important to enhance vehicular and pedestrian access and for essentially all of the stakeholders to continue to work together to those ends. So again, we could have proposed a lot more strenuous language. We chose to take a reasonable and balanced approach, and we hope that you'll support it for those reasons. The last thing that I want to do is just briefly address this letter that we just got from Washington County. And I think a representative from Washington County is here, so I may have some additional comments if there is a rebuttal by the county. But apparently, the county is objecting to any of these amendments that would say anything that has to do with any development that is strictly outside of the boundaries of the town center area, complaining that they would have to do additional traffic study for anything that does that. I guess two things come to my mind first. I'm not sure how you run a traffic study to test collaboration, which is certainly one of the things that we were talking about first. Really, the policy that we were proposing, both of the policies really, are about working together and continuing to try and come up with plans that provide a more balanced approach to mobility in that area rather than just being about moving traffic through there at all other expenses. So, we don't think that you have to run traffic studies to implement policies like that. And we don't think that either one of these policies that we're proposing necessarily requires a certain outcome. We think it's something that the city should be using its discretion on, and that's, it's your town, it's the county's street, but it's your town. So with that, I think my time is up, but I wanted to just give you some response, I think, to the county's letter. Also, I would point out that there have, the traffic studies for the town center, and Julia and others may be able to respond to this more, did include more than just the specific edges of the town center that you're now talking about implementing. So it looked at a broader area. And again, this isn't, the policies we're talking about are not result-driven. They're talking about generally having a more balanced system, which is, again, completely consistent with your plan.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions before?
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Nancy Taylor.
Of course, I've said again and again, I'd like to see changes on Tuolton Sherwood Highway, but I really dislike proposed changes that are in favor of new development over old development, development that's been here for a while, development I use daily, in my daily life. I believe the town center is Old Town, where I'm sitting right now. But since you all find three areas that you want to define as the city center, let's make it work for everyone in Sherwood, not just new development. Washington County and the state of Oregon run traffic studies. We all know that. We see them out, we see their people and their vans. They're taking all kinds of measurement, they're counting, they're doing a variety of different things. They have seemed flawed from the very beginning, when I first attended a meeting, and they still seem very flawed, not very scientific to me. I studied statistics, and I do feel like everything I've read and everything I've seen is flawed thus far. It seems very biased rather than reasonable. Thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate all of you serving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Does anybody like to testify on the town center plan as it relates to the adjacent issue at this time? Then we will close the public hearing. All right. Staff have any comment or rebuttal on this, and then we'll go into deliberation.
No comment or rebuttal, but as, I just wanted to address, there's some people in the room that weren't here at the last meeting, and it may appear like that was very limited testimony. I just wanted to remind the commission as well as the audience that at the last meeting, the commission took public testimony on everything. There was one issue that was raised that you wanted additional information on, which was, or additional sort of changes to, which was the adjacency issue. You provided direction on all the other elements of the plan, and that's why this evening the testimony was focused on just the adjacent issue and the changes that were shown as track changes in the packet that you received. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. So, I'm used to being on the end where I get to --
You don't get that anymore.
I don't get that anymore.
No, you don't.
So, as you can guess, I have a, I had crafted a couple of changes to, you know, I think what the staff brought to us was exactly what I heard the commission asking for. And I would ask if anybody has any concerns or comments regarding the language that was added in red. And that's what the staff, I believe, was specifically responding to the commission's request for adjacent to and within.
No.
So all the red track changes we're in agreement with?
Yeah.
So there are three --
Policy green, four.
Yeah, so there's basically three green track changes that were mentioned by Mr. Grillo, which are the Policy 5, 7, and 7.6 and 8.4. And --
And Chair Simpson, I just wanted to highlight, there are some other areas within the policy text that says "and adjacent to." So in Policy 6, in the policy statement, Policy 6.2, Policy 8.2, and Policy 8.3.
Okay. Okay. And so, to ask, to clarify on those "and adjacent to," are we in, anybody have any concern regarding the "and adjacent to" wording in those that Julia just mentioned?
Are you talking about all?
All the green or just?
All green, just the "and adjacent to"?
Just the "and adjacent to," those three words in the places that Julia just mentioned.
I'm okay with those.
Okay. So now we're left to the ones that I had actually suggested in my own mind, another concern on specifically on 8.4 and 7.6, calling out a specific commercial development. Having done code cleanup and having to clean up code for places that no longer exist or the names have changed, it seemed more appropriate to remove a specific site reference. So my simple change on 8.4 was to remove the letters, the words right after the comma.
Such as the Sherwood Cinema Center.
And other adjacent facilities, because that's reiterating our request for pedestrian access from town center to developments adjacent to the town center, just paraphrasing that last little part.
But would you want to keep the, that improved safety for all modes?
I'm in 8.4.
8.4.
Oh, sorry.
So 8.4 was the simplest one. I'm just tackling it in a reverse engineering, going from the easiest to the difficult, so.
Yes, I think that we're, I mean, I think we're talking about --
We're talking about --
-- benefit for all adjacent areas, so I think you're --
And, yeah.
My concern is that, I agree with you, I think that when we start calling out specific developments, are other developments going to be inadvertently left behind? That would be my only concern.
Okay. And I think the spirit of what was discussed is still being retained without calling out a specific site. So if we're in agreement, we can modify what was presented to us on 8.4 by removing the last words after the comma. Would everybody be in agreement to that being where we wanted to go?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to detract from the point of bringing the adjacent areas. That's fine.
Okay. And on 7.6, I struggled with this one because of the way it was written. And I had, I wish I'd made a copy for everybody. I crafted language that I thought was easier to read and followed the language that we had used in the other strategies. "The city will support collaborative solutions that enhance access and improve safety for all modes of transportation within and into the town center."
You left out pedestrian?
I said all modes of, and, you know.
He should have took out the word vehicular and left transportation.
And, you know, this is the big vision. If we ever wanted to be the train stop on the way to the wine country, or whatever modes of transportation are available, we're not calling out vehicles or pedestrians. We're saying, part of this town center goal is to create a vibrant town center, and we should be enhancing all modes of transportation, accesses and safety within and into the center.
I agree. I think, though, that immediately, a couple of us had a question about pedestrians. Maybe we should add something there about pedestrian or otherwise, or, you know, something that says, we're talking about all modes, including pedestrian, just in case you were wondering.
Because when people think, I think when people think of transportation, they're not thinking of walking.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it might be right in on this. I like keeping the pedestrian part in.
Something in there, yeah.
For pedestrians.
Pedestrian or otherwise, somewhere in the middle.
For pedestrians and all modes of transportation.
Yeah, people may not automatically consider pedestrian as a mode of transportation, so I can understand that.
Okay. But again, I was trying to keep it in the same language and get it so that anybody can read this, say, we weren't just thinking about the commercial area, but there's an opportunity in Old Town for other modes of transportation.
Did that include, can you read that to me again? Because I --
It's hard, I know.
Thank you.
"The city will support collaborative solutions that enhance access and improve safety for pedestrian and all other modes of transportation within and into the town
Did we want to --
Wait, hold, sorry.
Did we want to keep adjacent developments or adjacent properties out of that, or do we want to include that?
Yeah, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to hear. I really --
Assume you're coming from an adjacent property. However, it doesn't actually say adjacent.
Well, Policy 7, the overriding policy is --
At the top.
Is the adjacent to.
Yeah, people traveling to, within, and adjacent to the town center, yeah.
So the overarching policy within that, over the strategy, or I could try and, that's where you get word crafting, you start ending, adding more and more.
Yeah, I mean, you could do all modes of transportation, and then do adjacent to within and into, but it is over, I mean, it is --
I think it's fine, because if you read seven.
It is multiple times stated, the adjacent to, considering we're -- It is multiple times stated, the adjacent to, considering we're, we're making, in fact, all these policies, we're making the overlaying policy to be adjacent to anyway.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that was my attempt at trying to craft language that would be similar to what we already had in place with all the other language and not call something site-specific.
I like the fact that we're not calling site-specific, just because it makes it more universal.
Again, my big vision of rail into Old Town on the wine country tour or some other means of transportation.
Sign me up.
So.
I do kind of like the adjacent developments, or the, or adjacent to, in there, because it consistently throughout the document, adjacent to.
Within and.
Okay.
I mean, I could add adjacent to in that sort of place like.
It's not going to hurt anything, I don't think.
No, it won't.
Okay.
Obtain that.
Within, adjacent to, and into the Town.
Yeah, I mean, it could be considered redundant, but it's not going to hurt.
Okay.
It sets emphasis on the book.
Yes, that we are trying to create connectivity.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So, in light of, in light of the decisions we just made, do we, Julia, do we need to have a discussion about Washington County's letter in regards to what we just?
That was a public comment that was provided, and you certainly, you do not have to talk about every.
Right.
Piece of public comment that is made, but you certainly can, and whether or not you feel like it's something you want to consider in your recommendation or not, or if you feel like it is.
Okay.
Factored into your recommendation.
My take on it is, I think that the edits we just made, the red language and then the edits to the green language, is not so specific that it puts anybody in any particular corner or creates a hard place, you know, for an entity down the road, you know, like ODOT or Clackamas County in regards to what happens on the outskirts of the Town Center. We're just clearly saying that we want to make it easy to get in and out of the Town Center. So, anybody adjacent to, whether it's Twelton Sherwood Road or ODOT, or whatever the road is, we would have to make all considerations, it seems to me, about, you know, any sort of proposals in the future, so.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I personally understand where they're coming from in the letter, but I also, I personally think that it's important that we have language to help provide something for our existing long-time developments as opposed to just, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important, and I think that at the last, at the last hearing, the concerns brought up with some of the changes, I think were very valid, which is why we came to this point. So, I think I have considered what they had to say, but I think it's very important that we keep the adjacent to stuff in.
Okay.
I agree. I think, you know, from living here for so many years and seeing what has, what we've grown to, I believe it's very important that we recognize some of the establishments that we've had here and how they have become part of our community, so.
And we are trying to get above number five, right? Higher than five?
Yes, absolutely.
That's our goal. How are we going to get there unless, you know, we make it friendlier?
And I believe, I have to commend staff from the beginning of this process to where we are today. This document has changed significantly with the community comments and the citizens that have been involved in the work sessions that have got us here, that we have a document that I think in the future we can look back with, you know, pride to say we've created a document that's flexible enough that as a planning commission and staff and council, they can make decisions that are going to benefit everybody. So, I would ask staff, I want to make sure I do this correctly, we have to make a recommendation not just for the plan, but for the comprehensive plan changes, and I want to make sure that we get the language correct, because we are, we all remember way back last meeting, there was another part to this, the comprehensive plan, so we need to incorporate, the motion needs to.
Yes, and actually, I want to remind you that in your packet as well is, I think it is on page 26 of the packet, 26 and 27 of the packet, is the comment log that commission provided specific recommendations on changes to the plan itself as well as the conference of plan text changes. And so, what I would recommend is a motion forwarding a recommendation to the council approving the Town Center plan and the conference of plan changes, including policies and strategies with the changes that were discussed tonight as well as the changes documented in the comment log. That would be my recommendation to you.
Yep.
So, is there any further deliberation before we request a motion?
No.
All right.
No.
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the PA 13-01 Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan and, what was the second part, the Sherwood?
Town Center Plan.
Town Center Plan, with the changes documented and discussed at our previous Town, or at our previous Planning Commission meeting on the 13th, as well as the changes discussed in tonight's commission meeting, based on the applicant testimony, analysis, findings, and conditions, whatever else this is. So, it's very generic. Anyway.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of recommending approval, forwarding a recommendation of approval on PA 13-01 Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan and the Town Center as outlined and changes made? All say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Simpson, can I say something?
Yes.
Sorry.
Please.
I just, well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say you, I appreciate you commending staff for the work, and I just wanted to say that the commission, but the public is really who should be commended on this. This wouldn't be the document it is today if it weren't for the public participation and involvement and the commission's participation and involvement, so I wanted to sort of throw it back at you guys.
Yes.
Yeah, and I see at least a couple people out there that were here for the, for our working session, so we appreciate those people who, who came and worked with us to put this together.
And do we know when the council will be hearing this so that the, any further comments can be made there?
Yes, thank you. It will be going to the city council at their September 27th council meeting. Let me just confirm that.
That's a Saturday.
September 27th, well, then it's not then. Let me get the exact date. It is the September 17th city council meeting.
So, again, everybody that's been involved has, has an opportunity on the 17th.
Yes.
Continue to be engaged.
Yes, and we will, and we will make sure that the website is updated to reflect that that will be the date as well, but everybody here is hearing that it will go to the city council on September 17th.
Wonderful, thank you. Anybody else have any other commissioner comments?
No.
And I move, we adjourn.
Wow. That's our record. Right there.